Emily, are we now we are recording? Okay. All right, everybody. All right, council. It is 7:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person in consideration of ongoing COVID-19 health concerns, we are also offering the public the option to participate through Zoom. If preferred, instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the city council calendar item listed on the front page of missionks.org. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to be compliant with which it stands. One nation under God, indivi- individual with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, please call the roll. Thomas here, Boating House.
Here.
Loudon here, Ryard here, King here, Inman.
Here.
Josie.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
All right, we do have a revised agenda for tonight's meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve our revised agenda.
Mayor, I move the city council approve the revised April 19th, 2023 agenda as printed.
Second, we have a motion as second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Josie.
Aye.
Boating House.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Inman.
Aye.
Ryard.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next we would move into public hearings, but we do not have any public hearings on our agenda tonight. So we will move into our special presentations. We have three special presentations this evening. Our first special presentation tonight is our annual Arbor Day proclamation. This year Arbor Day will be celebrated on Friday, April 28th. And I'd like to present this proclamation to Mr. Almany and our Parks, Recreation and Tree Commission and ask Penn to give us an update on our Arbor Day activities. Penn, come on up.
Thank you, mayor. So we're pleased that you're extending proclamation day. Once again, this year, our activities are coming up next Friday, 11:30. We're meeting with the Rushton Elementary students at Westview Elementary to share with them the importance of trees and the resilience they provide all of our community efforts to cool the earth and to provide beauty to our surroundings. So we appreciate it and they're grateful for it. Thanks.
All right, and we have another Arbor Day related items. So our second presentation is recognition of the 2023 Arbor Day poster contest winner from Rushton Elementary School. Mr. Almany, will you and Ms. Gamison, please come forward to share your presentation?
Thank you, mayor and council. Pleased to be before you again today. We're excited to share this opportunity with one of our youngest artists of the community. Every year we participate in an Arbor Day poster contest and I've invited Jackie Gamison to introduce a history and just want to know that she's our longest tenured Parks, Recreation and Tree Commission member and actually ushered in Tree City USA for the city of Mission 21 years ago. So Jackie.
I would like to welcome the Stoggsdale family to come forward. Our winner and parents and grandparents to our here tonight. If you'd like to come and join us as well.
Council, mayor, I'd like to present to you Vanessa, who is our poster winner for the 2023 Arbor Day poster contest at Rushton Grade School. And when Vanessa took the time and the detail to present her first place winner, and when you see it, you will see that everybody is there. Spark and Carmel and all of her friends and her trees and her rabbits and her birds. But I would like you all to recognize this young lady who has a great deal of talent. Would you like to come forward and shake the hands of all of our council members?
Congratulations. Congratulations again. Congratulations.
Love it. Fantastic.
Good.
What to do?
Do you want us to stand up or?
Stand maybe.
Let's stand and maybe schmooch together.
Of course.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Great. And then one, two, three. Thank you.
All right, congratulations to our winner. And I would like to thank all of the students who entered the contest this year and the Rushton staff who we enjoy partnering with for our annual Arbor Day events. Our second proclamation tonight designates April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in an effort to bring awareness that children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn and grow. It is critical that we come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all and that as a community, we are extending a helping hand to children and families in need. We thank the many child advocates, including teachers, nurses and social workers that work tirelessly every day, helping children and ensuring their bright and healthy futures. Next, we would move into our issuance of notes and bonds, but we do not have any items related to the issuance of notes and bonds this evening. So we will move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has seven items tonight. Our council committees met on April 12th and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed. Items 4A through 4G.
Second, we have a motion as second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Thomas.
Yes.
Crane.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ryard.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Boating House.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right, next we move into public comments. So if any members of the public would like to make a comment on items that are not included on our agenda this evening, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern and make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. All right, seeing no comments, we would move into action items and from our planning commission, but we do not have any items from the planning commission tonight. So we will move into our committee reports. Councilmember Boating House, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on April 12th and considered nine items. The meeting minutes, CMB application for Tacos on Lamar LLC, DBA tacos algaio, resolution for 2023 city-sponsored festival events, declaration of surplus equipment and personnel policy guidelines were approved earlier this evening under the consent agenda. A pre-development agreement with Mission and Beverly LLC, resolution adopting an antisemitism definition, purchase and installation of automated license plate readers and classification and compensation recommendations for the Mission Police Department will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Item 7A is a pre-development agreement with Mission and Beverly LLC, the Millhouse Development. Since the fall of 2022, staff has been in discussion with representatives from Millhouse Development regarding a 228-unit multifamily project proposed in two buildings located east and south of the Powell Community Center and they assembled parcels. The developer has indicated a desire to seek a property tax abatement for this project. Historically, when the city entertains discussions surrounding the use of incentives, an agreement is negotiated with the proposed developer. This agreement includes provisions that designate Mission and Beverly LLC as the developer of record for the project area from the effective date of the agreement through December 31st, 2023. It provides that the development is contingent on satisfactory negotiation of a final development agreement. It completion of the planning and zoning entitlement process and an agreement on any public improvements and development design. Nothing in this pre-development agreement obligates the city to approve any public incentives and the developer will establish a $10,000 fund to reimburse the city for any city expenses included during discussion and review of a final development agreement. Just again, the adoption of the pre-development agreement does not obligate the city council to any public incentives. The specific terms of a final development agreement will be considered once city staff and the city's consulting team have evaluated the request and formulated a recommendation to the city council. Mayor, I move that the city council approve a pre-development agreement with Mission and Beverly LLC, the Millhouse Development, in connection with consideration of a 228-unit multifamily and mixed-use redevelopment project known as the Mission Beverly Mixed Use Project.
Second, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Ryard.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Boating House.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 7B is a resolution adopting an antisemitism definition. During the March 15th city council meeting, representatives from the Jewish Community Relations Bureau, American Jewish Committee, presented information on the increasing incidence of antisemitism across the country. They are working with cities throughout the region to educate and seek adoption of the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance's working definition of antisemitism. Antisemitism, including harassment based on actual or perceived Jewish origin, ancestry, ethnicity, identity, affiliation or faith, remains a persistent and disturbing problem in American society. The resolution presents outlines, missions, the resolution presented outlines mission's commitment to adopt the non-legally binding International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance working definition of antisemitism and provides for the working definition to be made available as an educational resource for all city employees. Adoption of the working definition aligns with mission's nondiscrimination protections and council's desire to take action where appropriate to signal and reinforce our goal of becoming a welcome, of being a welcoming and inclusive community. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution recognizing the growing problem of antisemitism in the United States and calling for the adoption of the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance's working definition of antisemitism.
Second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion on this item? Yes, Hillary?
Just a quick comment, just a disclosure that I work for the JCRB AJC, but no conflict, just making a comment.
Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Crane.
Aye.
Boating House.
Aye.
Ryard.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 7C is the purchase and installation of automated license plate readers. In 2022, a grant application was submitted to fund the purchase and installation of automated license plate readers at key locations in the city of Mission. An award of $140,000 was approved through the Department of Justice. Since then, staff has worked with vendors, public works and neighboring jurisdictions to coordinate this project. Eight of the nine locations chosen will be sites the city of Mission will own. The Foxridge and Lamar location is being purchased and installed by the Johnson County Sheriff's Office to protect critical county infrastructure in the area. It is important to remember that this technology takes photos of the rear of vehicles passing by the camera. The only time officers are alerted is if there is an association to the license plate that is in the database. This technology is not used for any type of traffic enforcement or other monitoring. Electric Electronic Technology, Inc. was chosen for this project based on the lowest long-term cost as well as the functionality of the system. Additionally, there was significant cost savings due to the Johnson County Sheriff's Office agreeing to host our data on their ALPR server. A memorandum of understanding is in development by the Sheriff's Office for the service and will be provided back to council for prior to making a final determination about data hosting. The majority of this project costs will be covered by the grant funds. The remaining balance of $7,637 is recommended to be funded through the asset forfeiture fund. Mayor, I move the city council enter into an agreement with Electronic Technology, Inc. for the purchase and installation of automated license plate readers at key locations throughout the city of Mission for an amount not to exceed $147,637.
Second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Boating House.
Aye.
Ryard.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Crane.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 7D involves the classification and compensation recommendations for the Mission Police Department. At various points over the past several years, staff has shared with council the challenges faced by the police department in recruiting and retaining qualified, competent sworn law enforcement officers. The difficulties for smaller departments like ours continue to increase as agencies, both public and private, in the metropolitan area leapfrog each other to increase compensation to both attract and retain officers. Classification and compensation adjustments citywide in 2017, 2021, and most recently with the 2022 merit increases, have allowed Mission to remain competitive when hiring across all departments. However, a number of factors influencing the law enforcement profession specifically have led us to a situation where we once again need to address compensation for the police department. The city administrator and police chief have been working together for several months to understand the competition, to try and develop recommendations, which are both meaningful and sustainable into the future. Mayor, I move the city council approve the new salary structure for sworn law enforcement personnel and authorize the city administrator to proceed to implement one-time adjustments to compensation of commissioned police staff in order to address ongoing issues of recruitment and retention.
Second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion on this item? Yes, Laura?
I, I, at your place, I think you have the recommended salary structure. So as a part of this motion, you would be adopting this and would become, just be rolled into the larger part. You'll see it separated and that's because as we've kind of talked about, there's some challenges in trying to melt, either maintain the step system that we've been using previously or meld that into the, the existing structure for other employees. So this is what the chief and I have worked to develop and what would be shared in meetings in the next week or two as we meet with the staff and share the results of your action this evening.
Right, any questions? Yes, Hillary?
Just a point of clarification, Laura. So it's just the police department increases that we're voting on tonight, not everything else that's included on this.
Correct, everything else that, and I thank you for that point of clarification. Everything else that is included on this list is the classification structure that you adopted in January of this year.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing no further comments, Robin, will you please call the roll? Josie.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Loudon.
Aye.
Boating House.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Ryard.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's my report, man.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Josie, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Certainly, thank you, mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on April 12th and we considered seven items. The meeting minutes, purchase of permitting software and purchase of trail counters were approved under the consent agenda previously this evening. Supplemental Building Inspection Services contract, a declaration of structures unfit for human habitation, the 2024 through 2028 five-year cars program plan and summer camp staff wage adjustments will be considered now under the regular agenda. Item 7E, supplemental building inspection services with FSC Incorporated. The Community Development Department is experiencing an unprecedented, unprecedented number of applications for new development construction in the city, in particular for several large-scale projects. These projects, in addition to regular building activity, have placed a significant burden on the Community Development Department that cannot be handled by the building official alone. City council approved addition of a building inspector for the 2023 budget year and recruitment for that position is underway. However, the current workload still exceeds the current staff capacity, even after the building inspection, building inspector's position is filled. In an effort to meet the needs of the development community and ensure the construction of projects in accordance with building codes, community development staff would like to contract with FSC Incorporated to augment inspection services for new development construction. This would include structural, mechanical, fire and life safety inspections. Therefore, mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with FSC Incorporated, consulting engineers for supplemental building inspection services in an amount not to exceed $230,000.
Second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Thomas.
Yes.
Ryard.
Aye.
Josie.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Loudon.
Yes.
Inman.
Aye.
Boating House.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 7F on the agenda this evening is a declaration of a structure, of structure as unfit for human habitation at 6350 West 49th Street. The structure at 6350 West 49th Street is a townhome built in 1979. The structure has an ongoing history of unresolved code violations dating back to April 1st, 2022. On February 17th, 2023, an evidentiary hearing was held to make a determination on the complaint and order for hearing personally served to the owner on January 26th, 2023. The sole purpose of this hearing was to provide the owner and other interested parties the opportunity to provide evidence and documentation for the building official serving as the public officer to consider when making the final determination as to whether the property was unfit for human habitation as noted in item three of the complaint and order for hearing and in accordance with section 510.160 of the Mission Municipal Code. As a result of the January 26th hearing, the public officer has made the determination that the property located at 6350 West 49th Street in Mission, Kansas is hereby declared unfit for human occupancy and deemed a public nuisance. The public officer, the public officer determined that the cost of repairs do not exceed 50% of the value of the property, which since the property is a duplex or townhome, includes the value of the neighboring, neighboring property sharing the common firewall and ordered the property to be repaired, altered or improved. On February 21st, 2023, the findings of fact with order of abatement was personally served and mailed via certified mail to the owner and all parties of interest. The deadline for compliance with the findings of fact with order of abatement was March 21st, 2023. Despite all efforts by staff to achieve compliance, the violations have not been corrected and the property remains in violation. In accordance with section 510.160C of the Mission Municipal Code, if the owner fails to comply with an order to repair, alter or improve or to vacate and close the structure within 30 days from the date of such order, the public officer shall file with the governing body his or her written report of the proceedings and orders, which shall be reviewed by the governing body at its next regular meeting. And upon approval of the report and proceedings by the governing body, the public officer may cause such structure to be repaired, altered, improved or to be vacated and closed. Mr. Brown, will you please present your report?
Mayor, council. It's been a long journey to get to the point where we are today. Resolution that's before you is final step in this process as far as the city's involvement in where we've been and where we are. Resolution will define a time that action has to begin and a significant course of action for work to continue, whatever the case may be, to get this resolved. If any deadlines are missed in this particular thing, the resolution also orders the building official serving as a public officer to take whatever action necessary to obtain bids and the city take the actions necessary to abate the violations and to bring the property back into a habitable condition. So it's no longer a nuisance to the adjacent property owner. As I said, it's been a long, ongoing, difficult process. Many, many court appearances. Other individuals are here this evening. Ms. Minkoff, the owner of the property, her legal counsel is here. City prosecutor is here on behalf of the city for any legal questions you may have that will have this process got where it is. And the neighbor, the homeowner that's been residing next to this for far too long is in attendance, is what? Have any specific questions for me?
Any questions?
I just have a comment. The matrix you put together to define all the court proceedings and everything you've been involved in has been extremely helpful in looking at a thorough picture of this property and I want to tell you how much we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep, Laura?
Hit myself in the face with a microphone. My depth perception must be up. I think just for the public record, noting that although Mr. Brown's presentation was relatively brief this evening, he did share that more extensive information at our committee meeting on April 12th, as well as, as councilmember Crane referenced, that information, complete information has been in both the committee packet and this evening's legislative packet, so.
That is correct. Thank you, Laura. So we will first do public comment and then turn to council discussion on this item. So is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Yes, please come to the lectern and state your name and city of residence.
Thank you, mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Randall Robb. I'm actually a resident of Kansas City North on the Missouri side, but don't hold that against me this evening. So I'm the potential purchaser of the property as is. It's been, as Mr. Brown said, it's been a very, very lengthy and difficult journey that we've been on, trying to get to this point to where I'm ready to buy it, ready to close, take the problem off the city's hands. And not until the last 10 days did we get all the issues resolved, basically dealing with things that the seller needed to do had not been done. And I've made almost every court appearance every two weeks for the last probably six or eight months to keep this thing moving and make sure it gets resolved. I'm ready to close, can close, ready, willing and able to close within the, probably, I'm shooting for the end of next week, scene of the month title companies are a little swamp, so it might go into the final week. But within the next 10 days, I can certainly close on the property and immediately start with the obvious things. It's got a terrible, probably a 40-year-old wood roof which leaks like a sieve. I'll have a new roof on it within a week or 10 days and we'll proceed with taking the problem off the city's hands. I made one, one request to the city. I said, I would like to be treated like a new property owner, not be burdened with the sins of the previous owner. So as the city moves forward with this process, if I have, there's a violation, we don't get done quickly enough, you give me a notice and I'll resolve the problem within the timeframe. I don't want the city to be able to come along two weeks after I close and pay for the property and say, well, you know, we already started this process two months ago and we're going to slap a lien on your property. I just need a letter that says, I'm clean with the city the day I take, the day I take possession. And if I don't do it, then Jim can send me a letter and a notice of violation. And I'd be glad to get this thing done, but I just, I'm not comfortable with having the anvil hanging over my head without, without some kind of assurance that I'm going to have the normal procedure that everyone else does. But I, I can close without a problem. All the issues are resolved and I think we can do it without issue.
Sure. Oh, Laura, or perhaps our city prosecutor, I don't know if you could speak a little bit to the, to the process and the existing violations? Or I think I saw one more hand in the back for public comment first, yep.
Mayor, council, my name is Jay Meyer.
Yes.
I'm the adjacent owner. I've been a resident of Mission here for 42 years. I like it here. And Mrs. Minkoff had been my neighbor for 30 years. She was a great neighbor for the first 20 years, but the last 10 years have been ridiculous. And my wife fell to the point of helping her and that's okay. But it seems to be the same thing that's going on here. Now I've got my notes. Randy Robb came on August 19th. He's going to buy it and close. Everything's great, so you take his word. August 19th. What's today? And we're going through the same thing. I think the city needs to move forward, close the building, him do his job and get this problem taken care of. I mean, I've put up with this rats in my ceiling for six months. And you can't get up there because it's a vaulted ceiling. Luckily, we were able to trap them, but there's continually animals all around. The dumpster's been there for 90 days. How can you let a dumpster there for 90 days? I thought the city had some rules. Let's enforce them. Let's vote to get this thing closed. Let's give Jim the proper authority to make the improvements. I want to work with Jim. I would have wanted to work with Randy in August. It's April. Does anybody got any questions for me? I'll be happy to answer.
So we don't.
I think I've put up a lot.
Yes, and I.
I've got letters. I've tried to be cooperative. I've tried to keep people abreast of what's going on. And this is the first time I've said anything. My wife said, don't go up there and say anything. Well, I'm saying something and everything I'm saying is the truth.
And we appreciate your participation in coming out. And, and we appreciate your participation in coming out tonight. Just for, um, everyone's reference, we don't typically ask questions of our public commentators, commentators, but we, um, appreciate you providing your input, for sure. Yes, one more from the audience.
Uh, my name's Mike Page. I'm Miss Minkoff's attorney. I don't really have much to say, just, um, it has been a long process, Mister Brown. Uh, the city's been great to work with, but, uh, uh, I think we actually are kind of at the, at the end here, and, um, we'd like to get this house sold. I think Mister Robb can buy the house very soon, as we just asked that. Whatever could be done to kind of help along with that, we would, uh, we asked that to happen, like we are on the verge of.
All right. Seeing no more hands, we will now move into council discussion of this item. Council questions? I think I had one pending on the process, Laura. I don't know if you or the city prosecutor want to address that in terms of the violations. And it. Yeah, so to refresh, I think my question was basically, do, do the violations and the existing status, is that specific to the property or this property owner? So I don't know if it's better for you or our city prosecutor to speak to that.
Hi, everyone. Jacob Turner, uh, worked for Dave over at the City Attorneys. So essentially what this process is, is not individually against Miss Minkoff. It's on the, it's a called an in-rum proceeding, which means it's a property proceeding. So when we started this process, it was, is this house unfit for human habitation? Yes or no? Um, and everyone who had an interest in the property, so that was Miss Minkoff as the owner, uh, the neighbor, um, everyone had that opportunity to participate in that process. Now, today legally, your decision today, if you declare unfit for human habitation, um, which is what the question is on the table today, um, then it empowers the city to decide, okay, are we going, what's our next step? We're empowering the city to either fix the issues or, um, work with a potential buyer to set up some sort of, um, time, timeframe and fixing the issues and keeping the pressure on, on, on the potential buyer to, if it's declared unfit for human habitation.
Okay, so the buyer, any potential buyer, um, whether that's been here tonight or anyone else would kind of step into that process because it applies to the property, not the owner?
Yes, um, so it's, it's, um, it becomes, it's not really a lien on the property, but it's essentially, um, they take, it's on the title and they take interest with this, um, declaration of unfit for human habitation on the title. Yep.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other questions on this item? Yes, Ben?
So as I understand it, I'm looking at five ten dot one six zero C. The governing body approves this, um, the report from the, from the public officer. And, and what we may immediately cause such structure to be repaired, altered, or improved. Is that correct? Is there any time delay here, or are we?
I believe there was a schedule outlined in the more detailed materials. I don't know if you can speak to that, Jacob, Mister Turner.
Yes, um, Ben, another great question. Um, so under the statute, or not the statute, under, um, the code itself, um, you can proceed after today, we could proceed immediately. Um, Howard Jim, and I believe, uh, an extension of an olive leaf here has, has put some timeframes, um, to give them essentially a little bit more time to try to figure that, to figure this out. Um, if we want, if you wanted to, you could immediately allow him to go in and start making the changes now, but in, in the, the resolution that he put together, he built in a little bit more of a timeframe.
And I think that was around the beginning of May, Jim, is that correct? May the first, per the schedule and then materials that we reviewed in more detail at committee meeting.
Yeah, my concern is that if someone does make it, you know, an earnest effort to purchase the property and, and attempt to make repairs, that we can't just come in the day after closing and start swinging a wrecking ball or, or that we're, don't intend to do that. Um, because that doesn't strike me as, as fair, but, um, just want to understand more about what that, what that.
So if I can chime in a little bit.
Yeah, Brian.
We have to publish this resolution in a newspaper before it becomes effective, so that'd be next Tuesday. And then we have to hand deliver it to those interested parties, which requires three days after publication. So that'd be right around April twenty-eighth, so we just made it May first to give us a little extra time. Then on May first, that's when this kind of kicks in. There's thirty days to get the work done.
And a new owner, just like any current owner, could come in and start that work on May first for the schedule. We're just saying it runs with the property, and so there's no special sort of disposition if someone else wants to purchase as opposed to the owner, the current owner making these improvements. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And just one, yeah, one final unrelated comment. I work for a title insurance company, and while we haven't identified um, any real conflict of interest, um, reviewing the agreement that I've made with them, um, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote, and I'd like somebody else to offer the motion if possible.
Yes, do, do we have a motion on this item?
There, well, when, when it's offered, if, if discussion.
Oh, sorry, Ken, did you have a question? Sorry, I missed your hand.
I just wanted to make sure that we answered the question from the future purchaser of the property, whether we have any ability to, to give him any kind of letter that meets his need.
I think, Ken, I think he's essentially asking for a new schedule and staff's position is that, and the case decision is that this runs with the property, and so a vote tonight would keep the schedule that Jim has has established for either the current owner or any new potential owner.
Okay, thank you. Uh, then Mayor, I will move the city approve the resolution declaring the structure at sixty-three fifty West Forty-Ninth Street unfit for human habitation and ordering the structure to be repaired, altered, or improved or vacated and closed and identifying a strict timeline for compliance in accordance with section five one zero point one six zero C of the Mission, uh, city code, municipal code.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Edman?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Thomas?
Yes.
Ryard?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Ken. Um, item seven G this evening is the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight five-year cars program. Through a combination of state gas tax dollars and county general fund revenues, the cars program provides funds to cities to construct and maintain eligible streets. Each year, cities submit a five-year road improvement plan to the county from which projects are selected for funding, up to fifty percent of the project's construction and construction inspection costs. Approval of the resolution does not specifically commit the city to any expenditure of funds, and its purpose is to communicate to the county the cars eligible projects the city is considering over the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight planning horizon. The city's proposed projects are Row Avenue from Johnson Drive to Sixty-Third Street. Me, Sixty-Third Street from Noll Avenue to Row Avenue. Johnson Drive from Metcalf Avenue to Lamar Avenue. Noll Avenue from Martway Street to Sixty-Third Street. And Martway Street from Woodson Road to Roland Drive. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution adopting the five-year city-county street improvement program for the city of Mission for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon?
Aye.
Edman?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Chosey?
Aye.
Ryard?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And item seven H this evening is summer, summer camp staff wage adjustments. The recently approved referral and sign-on bonus for part-time summer staff will help with staffing. However, camp instructor interest is low at this point for the Mission Summer Camp Program. The Parks and Recreation Summer Camp Staff Wage Analysis conducted by the Parks and Recreation Director shows that Mission is in the mid-range level of the wage scale with several, several, several comparable camps offering a higher starting rate. Other municipal departments paying staff similarly to Mission are either smaller camps or have fewer activities and inclusions. Staff are recommending an increase in the starting wage of Mission Summer Camp Counselors from twelve dollars per hour to fourteen dollars per hour. The net increase in personnel expenses is one thousand seven hundred sixty dollars per week for a total seasonal increase of fifteen thousand eight hundred forty dollars, which will be offset by the childcare aware grant secured by staff. Mayor, I move the city council increase the starting summer camp staff pay rate to fourteen dollars with an estimated budget impact of fifteen thousand eight hundred forty dollars.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Kring?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Loudon?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Ryard?
Aye.
Chosey?
Aye.
Edman?
Aye.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right, next we will move into unfinished business, but we do not have any unfinished business tonight, so we will move into our new business. Tonight, we do have one item of new business, which is the election of our council president and our vice president. So we will begin with the election of council president. I would now open the floor for any and all nominations for council president. Yes, Mary?
Mayor, I nominate Councilmember Boltinghouse for the position of city council president with a term expiring April twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas?
Yes.
Loudon?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Edman?
Aye.
Ryard?
Aye.
Chosey?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, congratulations, Trent.
Thank you.
We will now take nominations for council vice president. I would open the floor for any and all nominations for council vice president.
Mayor?
Yes, Trent?
I nominate Councilmember Chosey for the position of city council vice president with the term expiring April twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or any further nominations? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Chosey?
Aye.
Edman?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ryard?
Aye.
Kring?
Aye.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, congratulations, Trent and Ben, on your selection as council president and vice president. And these are two-year terms, so. Suck for the next two years. All right. Comments from the city council? There being no further business items for consideration, we'll move into our council comments. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share? Yeah, Ben?
I just wanted to mention, I, I spoke to Celia about this, uh, before the meeting, but we, we've got a new street light at the end of Sixtieth Terrace by Noll, and it, it's made a big difference. I've heard positive comments from several residents, so thanks very much for all the work to get that going, and, um, it's much appreciated.
Excellent. Any other comments? Yeah, Debbie?
It's just a reminder, we have a Ward Three meeting tomorrow evening at the community center from seven to eight. All are welcome.
Great. Next, we will move into our council committee liaison reports. These are reports. Oh, I missed your hand, Ken, go ahead.
Number one, I just wanted to say congratulations on the extravaganza. That was very well-attended and very positive event, and we really appreciated all the people and diversity that was present there. And then, uh, secondly, I wanted to thank Trent for relieving me of my duties.
Yes, all right, so we will move into our council liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of the boards, commissions, and committees. First, we have council members Kring and Thomas for the Sustainability Commission.
Uh, just a couple of highlights from the sustainability meeting this month. Um, we talked about the citywide cleanup that's to happen on this Saturday on the twenty-second. And Emily, you can expand on that if you want. I've just got a couple more highlights, and then I'll look to you. And I shared pictures of my trip to the Galapagos Islands, which was kind of a cool thing, and it's such a pristine and sustainable area that I thought sustainability would really like it, and it was good. We had some recycling updates from Terry Baugh, who does our, our recycling queen, if you will. And some of the recycling elements, I think one and seven may not be recyclable now, so Emily, you may have more information on that, but I, there was a concern raised that several things that we're used to recycling will not be recyclable now because part of the reason that China may not be buying the recycles, and there's a variety of reasons, but it's kind of concerning. I recycle probably more than I have trash, and so I'm going to have to back up on that. Emily, I'm going to turn it over to you for any kind of update.
Certainly, thank you. Uh, as I think all of you know, the citywide cleanup will be this Saturday. Um, everyone that's participating should meet at Beverly Park at nine AM. So pre-registration was required for the event, um, mostly due to, um, uh, location assignments and T-shirt, uh, distribution. Um, so, but we have a hundred and ninety volunteers, which is just amazing. So.
Last year's number, per comparison?
Mid a hundred, a hundred and fifty or so.
All right, growing.
Yes, definitely growing. Um, it should be a wonderful day, uh, maybe have to dress a little warmly, uh, but that's fine for April. Um, so just great enthusiasm and we're really excited about a second annual event, so thanks to everyone. Um, for the recycling item tonight, actually, while we've been meeting here, um, the Sustainability Commission was hosting a smart recycling workshop over at the Pal Community Center. We were visited by Fox Four's Great Day KC this morning, so we had some live coverage in the morning. And then we believe Shawnee Mission Post is covering it this evening, so look for something, um, in the post tomorrow. Um, which is great timing, uh, to get the word out about the importance, and truly, um, we did have one comment on social media today about the slogan, when in doubt, throw it out, um, which really just speaks to Councilmember Kring's point about the delicacy of the recycling system on the whole. And that contamination in the recycling stream really does a detriment, a disservice to the integrity of the system overall, less, makes those commodities less marketable and, um, it really just kind of threatens the whole system. And so what we've really tried to do is say wishful recycling is harmful. So while I know you don't want it to go to the landfill, um, and, and reuse, um, and reducing the trash in the beginning is really the most important thing. Second most important thing, um, not to bag your recycling and then keep the plastic bags out of recycling stream. So these are the things that we teach. Um, and that's the messaging behind it, so is, uh, even though it sounds hard and we may receive some criticism, it's still just about, um, doing it right is better than doing it wrong. So, thanks.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have council members Loudon and Ryard for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
Uh, we met last week, or was it this week? It was this week. This has been a really long weekend. It's only Wednesday. Um, the Santee Group came and showed us the master plan for the park, which was very exciting. I don't want to, you know, ruin the surprise too much. Um, but I have to say that, um, I was really pleased with how it's going to look. There were a couple of things that were different than I was expecting. Uh, the parking lot is going to be pulled back off the street, which I think is going to be great for safety reasons. Um, taking my kids to that park there for a long time, and it's kind of a dangerous little situation there. Um, bathrooms, which makes me very happy. Um, the shelter, which can hold up to seventy-five people, mostly students, um, thinking of rushed in using that space. Let's see, shaded hangout space, which is great in the hot, hot summer. Um, they are going to have to move a few trees because of, you know, placing the, um, parking a little bit differently. Um, but they did all that they could to keep some of those older trees in place. Um, let's see. And, uh, Mohawk Park update, the steel is up. Um, landscaping ninety-five percent complete, parking lot is complete. Um, cedar roofing is going in as soon, and drywall picnic tables are coming in May, so it's, it's on track to be finished on time.
Great. And next we'll hear from Councilmember Boltinghouse on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to ask, uh, Laura to provide the better update here for this.
I won't hit myself in the nose this time. Um, so I, I think I've, if I haven't told you before, I love working on the Mission magazine. It's one of my favorite things that I get to do. We've had, we've been working through some issues with mailing lists and a variety of other things, but I've been working this week. We're theming our issues this year, and the issue number two, uh, which is starting to move to production is on sustainability. And so I have been reaching out this week to our resident and business contacts. Uh, we're looking at doing a feature on uh, residents who've added solar panels to their homes, uh, some of the backyard chicken and beekeeping, several of our businesses that are using more sustainable practices, and it was the happiest email inbox I've ever seen yesterday. Everyone was so enthusiastic and excited and, um, and we won't, those are the kinds of stories that we don't get to tell in the magazine, but why I think it is such, uh, an important tool, um, and resource for our community because it, it gives people the opportunity to have touchpoints that interest them and are engaged. So I appreciate the opportunity to continue to work on that, and we look forward to Councilmember Boltinghouse being able to join us again soon. Great. And finally, we have Councilmember Chosey with Family Adoption Committee.
Family Adoption Committee has not met since my last report.
Alrighty. We will move into, uh, my report, and we do have appointments to consider this evening. So this evening, we have two appointments to consider for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission. I put before you the appointments of Dustin Wolf, Ward One, and Sarah Emanuel's, Ward Three, for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission with the terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And I know Dustin couldn't be here tonight, but I think Sarah is in the audience. They're out. If you want to wave. There we go. Thanks for, thanks for coming out. And do we have a motion on these appointments?
Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointments of Dustin Wolf and Sarah Emanuel's to the Park Recreation and Tree Commission with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Welcome.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Riard.
Hi.
Boltinghouse.
Hi.
Kring.
Hi.
Loudon.
Yes.
Davis.
Hi.
Inman.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Chosey.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, welcome Dustin and Sarah, and we know you will enjoy your work with the PRT. Thank you so much and your, for your interest in volunteering to serve the city, and I was really impressed with our interviews that we had, and think you're both going to be great new members, so looking forward to that. Um, lastly, for my report, I do have a statement that I would like to share publicly regarding a decent, a recent development with the Gateway Project. So we learned this morning that yesterday Metropolitan Commercial Bank filed an action to foreclose its mortgage on the Gateway Project property. The city has not been named in this litigation. We are closely monitoring the litigation and will take appropriate action if and when necessary to protect the interests of the city in relationship to the project. It would be premature to make further comment at this time, but we will share information at a future date as it becomes available. Any questions related to this litigation should be forwarded through our city administrator, Laura Smith. And with that, we will move into our city administrator report. Laura, do you have any other items you'd like to share with council tonight? Okay, we do not have a need for an executive session this evening, so before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All, all those in favor say aye. We are adjourned.